So, I'd like to call this meeting to order and again, I want to thank everyone for actually coming to the chamber instead of hosting the meeting at the invocation. So, but we're here and I'd like to have everyone from my right introduce yourself for the audience.
Attorney Niles Krishen, Ward Seven, School Committee.
John Willhand, Ward Five, School Board.
And Gladys LeBrow Martinez, Ward One, City Council, but also Joint Committee.
Irene Villas-Neal Sims, Ward Four, School Committee and Chair of Joint.
And Terry Murphy, the Ward Two, City Counselor.
And we have other partners here. We have...
Devin Sheehan, Holyoke School Committee.
Mildred Lefave, Holyoke School Committee.
Anthony Soto, Holyoke Public Schools.
And Juan?
Juan Anderson Burgos, Ward Six, Counselor.
Thank you. So, I...we have few items on the agenda. I mentioned I don't have them, but can you read them off for me, please?
Yeah. And they're both filed by myself. So, first one is the City Council ordered that a joint City Council School Committee meet to discuss if the city is doing all that we can to move the MSBA process along. If not, what can the city do to accelerate the process? So, that's the first item on the agenda.
Okay, so I'll introduce Devin Sheehan so that he can talk more about this item.
Before you do that, though, let me just...I filed this at Dr. Reich's request and it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure it is what he told me, that when we first went to the MSBA after the vote and we went back, that they were asking us to provide in...my understanding was that it was to provide some kind of fiscal bonding capacity that the city would have and present that to the MSBA prior to other things that were in the plans. So, that's why I filed it. I was told that, you know, we've been a couple of months and we haven't given what they were asking for yet from the city's perspective. So, obviously, whatever we need to do to move the process so that whatever the final outcome is going to be, we are at the maximum capacity that we can. So, that's the goal of this order.
Moving forward, just to keep it in order, anyone who wants to speak, we need to request to be able to speak through the chair so that we can really get this, you know, in order to understand who's speaking at what moment, okay? Thank you. So, Sheehan?
So, I mean, speaking directly to that order and only to that, I mean, I would say that the city is moving along at this point. I mean, it was slow in the beginning, but they have met with the...spoke with the MSBA and the Division of Local Services and given them the information that they need.
Us?
So, I mean, to the spirit of that order, I mean, I don't know if you want more information, but to the spirit of that order, as of last Friday, I mean, the mayor has spoken with the MSBA and they have spoken with the Division of Local Services, which had the concern, which was the outline in the initial request from MSBA. I mean, that's...to the spirit of that, I think that the city is working in that. I mean, there's more to that, but I don't know if you want more information than just what is in the order. That's the will of the committee. I mean, it's...
I mean, if I can.
Yes.
My understanding, again, was that they are...and I could be wrong, but that the information that they were primarily looking for was from the city budget, not from the school budget, but from the city budget, what could, I guess, basically, the city afford in terms of bonding capacity. And I had an email with Dr. Reich on Monday and he told me the process was moving along, but that there were still things needed to be done. And, I mean, at this point, we should know where our financial capacity is and we should be getting that done. And that's what I'm trying to get done.
So, I guess the challenge lies then where all of this came from. I mean, it was an email dated December 17th that Dr. Reich sent to the mayor's office.
What date, excuse me?
December 17th, to President McGee, to the vice chair, stating that he spoke with the MSBA, that they were looking for a conversation with the mayor and they were looking for the financials to be reviewed. And I don't want to use the word certified, but at least reviewed by the Division of Local Services. Certified is too strong because they weren't going to do that. So, the...where the challenges were on the city side were that their...the central repository for those answers doesn't exist in the city because it was...information needed from the treasurer, information needed from the auditor, information needed from the tax collector. At the time, the...I don't believe at the time the tax rate was set as of December 17th. So, there was also that. And then there was information needed from Cindert Hilltop Securities for that, for them to compile that. We met on the day of the swearing-in in the mayor's office and I think...were you there, Anthony, at that meeting?
No.
Okay. Counselor McGee was there, myself, Dr. Reich, the mayor, and Mr. Bloomberg met to have some of those...some of those things that needed to be met. Mike Bloomberg informed us the week after that, the swearing-in, that the Division of Local Services would actually be in the city doing whatever normal review they do and they were going to meet with them then. But, so, from my understanding is the mayor has spoken with the MSBA and consulted with them and that the MSBA, as a result of getting some of the information, has requested that if we want to even entertain building a new school, then we can submit a statement of interest for a school building project and possibly go through an expedited process depending on the statement of interest and what they have. So...and from my understanding is that the...if you look at what half the project cost was, which would be fifty to sixty million dollars, sixty million dollars, that it is believed, and I'm using the word "believed" because I haven't seen it on paper, that there's a possibility the city could build a building within the normal tax levy without rate having to go to the voters for one building. That is...I'm saying that, though, as someone that has not seen the actual documents of the numbers. I'm saying that, that I've been...Anthony and I were told that at the meeting you were at last week, that that is a possibility.
Again, I...and I do think, you know, I know you're all trying to put this together and I just want to make sure that the city's part of that is being handled administratively because, and again, I...maybe I'm misinterpreting the words that I hear from Dr. Reich on occasion. I'm very optimistic that one of the things they were looking at was our...not only our bonding capacity, but because of that limited bonding capacity, the potential of maybe being able to give us a little bit better percentage. I don't know if that's true. I have heard that and that's all I've heard. And I haven't had anyone substantiate that, but that they were reviewing knowing that that exclusion did not pass, knowing that the city is not in the greatest financial shape, that they wanted to know what our potential bonding capacity was. And, I mean, if we'd seen them, we should be in a position to be able to do that relatively quickly. But according to Dr. Reich, when I filed this, which was a couple of weeks ago, that had not been done. So, and I know he did say they were moving on it, but I just...that's something we got to complete. And I'm just would encourage this committee that we make sure that all...whatever the city needs to do to make sure that that report goes to the MSBA and it is official and not just a conversation so that they have a document saying this is what our capacity is.
So, just to clarify for the committee, the three things that Dr. Reich had requested of the mayor's office that came from the MSBA were to provide clarity and documentation to the MSBA regarding how much the city of Holyoke can contribute to a building project given its current financial constraints, ensure that the aforementioned documentation is reviewed and endorsed by the DLS, Division of Local Services, prior to sharing with MSBA, and set up a time with MSBA leadership in the next three to four weeks to review and discuss the financial information provided. That was the contents of that December 17th email that I had referenced before.
Can you recognize...okay.
Have you recognized...Niles?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I might have missed this, Devin, our last meeting, but between December 17th and now, it sounds like we're almost there because that department's going to be here. Did you say on Friday? Am I missing?
I was speaking in past tense, so if the swearing-in was that Monday...
Oh, okay, okay.
They were here the week after, but I am not...I do not have the ability to say that all of the concerns of the Division of Local Services has been met. What I can say, though, is that the MSBA came to Dr. Reich and said that if you'd like to file a statement of interest, we would encourage you to do that.
Oh, okay, okay.
They were not encouraging that prior. In December, we were being told, actually in November, when we met with him in person, pause, get this information...
Okay.
And then do it. So, they have said now that you can file a statement of interest.
Okay.
I...
So, either they fulfilled the requirements or they changed their minds and the requirements are not necessary because we're at that step now.
I would still say personally from hearing everything, that there is still concern on how much. And I think the MSBA is willing to let us file, but the concern is, is there enough to be able to cover within the city limits? That's my own personal interpretation from not seeing the actual figures and some of the things that are...haven't come through yet with that. Okay.
So, just to echo what Devin was saying, I think that a lot of those conversations, you know, will eventually play out and need to be...need to be had before we move beyond the April 8th deadline. But as I read the order, is what can the city do to accelerate the process? The most immediate thing that the city can do is to vote on allowing the school department to submit a statement of interest before April 8th. The committee has received a memo from Aaron laying out pros and cons for different sites, but expressing the fact that we...or expressing that we would like that this committee refer or recommend that this memo gets sent to the full committee for a meeting on February 18th so that they can refer it to subcommittee and we could start the discussions and file a statement of interest with a location of PEC is what we're recommending. Be put in front of the full committee with the...you know, that will basically allow us to get in line. It doesn't mean that there's any funding tied to it. It doesn't mean that, you know, those discussions about where the funding's going to come from, those things need to happen. They don't...I don't think that they necessarily need to happen before the most immediate thing, which is to be able to put ourselves in line, to get invited into the MSBA core project. So, but I think there will be time after that. But I think right now, I feel like the most pressing thing that the city could do is we would need city council approval to allow us to submit a statement of interest for the PEC site. As I mentioned, there was a memo sent to the committee. If you don't have a copy, I have one here. That's the most immediate thing the city could do to accelerate this process to then harbor...to start, you know, making sure that all those conversations have...are had. And if it is the desire of the city, if we're ever invited into the core project, that they don't want to fund it, they'll have an opportunity to express that as well. It's not like this April 8th submission locks us into any type of funding or any type of details around the project. It simply says, hey, we'd like to join. We'd like you to invite us in. We want to take a look at our PEC site and submit a statement of interest. So, what I was hoping come out this committee, in order to do just that, which is accelerate the process, is that a recommendation be made to send this memo to the full committee on February 18th, which would likely result in them sending it to subcommittee.
If I can...and I know we talked about this and I was under the impression, and I think the proper way to do this would be that, and I know Aaron, I've got a copy of the letter, but that that actually be filed tomorrow with the city clerk's office and it would get on the city council agenda.
Right.
And that would be the first time, the full city council. For this committee to send it to the full city council, I...and I did express some concerns about open meeting and all that kind of thing with the agenda being...but I do think, you know, and I know Dr. Reich and Aaron indicated they would send a letter. I'm assuming they've sent it to the city clerk's office.
They will after tonight. So, the only thing that they will change is they'll address it to the city council.
Okay. And as long as they do that, then the city council will have it on the February 18th agenda. Yeah, it has to go by before noon tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
That will happen.
But then, once that happens, then the city council will be able to take it up in full. But I don't think it can get referred from this committee to the city council because the city council hasn't seen it.
And we have, yeah. So, I wouldn't even...can I just say, we can't even accept to see it just because we did not...didn't go through the proper ways to get there, so...
Yep.
Yeah, it's...it's a complicated...and we hear about it all the time with open meetings and everything else. So, we don't want to be in a violation of the open meeting and then all of a sudden...
Did we do anything wrong by sending it to this committee for review and discussion?
You...as long...I'm not a lawyer. I'll defer. But as I understand it, because it's a specific item that is going to be requested of the city council, it would need to go to the city council prior to us reviewing. But I think if we get it in there on the 18th, and I know we talked about the April deadline, right?
April.
So, you know, and I did emphasize, I get it on the 18th because of the meetings in March being a little bit skewed because of the holiday, St. Patrick's Parade and all the other things, that that would give us time to be able to make sure we get it done in March. That if we wait...if we didn't have it on the agenda for Tuesday, it would be very difficult to get it in by April 8th. But I think if we get it Tuesday, that shouldn't be a problem. And again, my...if I had this, had Dr. Reich's urged him because of his view that MSBA wasn't going to let us do anything until they had our financial backing to know that we do have a capacity to do something and this is what that capacity is. And again, as of Monday, he kind of indicated to me that while the...we're moving on it, it hasn't been fully, fully accounted.
I would say that that...what you just said is still how we stand now, that the MSBA said that you can submit, but they maybe are not 100% confident in the finances of the city to be able to fund a project. That's why they said you can submit a statement of interest because it really...I mean, the statement of interest is, people know, ties you to nothing. So...
I mean, it would be fine if we...from this, recommend both to the school committee, city council, and especially to the mayor's office, that all of our financial information be updated fully and be audited if need be so that MSBA knows what our financial situation is prior to April 8th. And I'm assuming they probably would want that anyway. But if we do that, then we've done all we can from this perspective and this order.
So, I don't...I think that that could and should happen. I don't think the MSBA needs that before we apply.
No, no.
I think the thing that they absolutely need is an application for us. And if we do provide financial information and it's not favorable, then they would likely not invite us to participate into the program. But what they absolutely need is an application for us if it is the desire of the city to even explore this as an option.
And I...
So, what you're saying, Anthony, is that we would have to go through the same process we probably went before because it's a different, right?
It's a new...
New project, so...
It would be considered a new...
We go through the same process before that we did and we...okay.
But that would only be the case if the MSBA says, yes, we want you to participate.
Right, right.
Now submit a much more detailed plan and, you know, that's...you know, then we'll have to do a feasibility study again, like, probably. Then that's when they'll ask us to appropriate funding for certain things. But at this point in the process, we're not even there yet.
All right.
We don't even know if they're going to...I mean, I'm confident that they'll entertain it and if finances are favorable and they feel comfortable. But right now, we don't even know if they're going to even invite us in after the fact. It's just like...it's just asking...letting them know that we're interested and that we have the city council's support to submit an application. And if they can, please invite us in so that we can start, you know, getting deeper into the process, at which point then we'll start talking about funding. But we're not even there yet.
You shared the eighth deadline. Is that because this is an open process for anyone across the state to go ahead and apply? That's why also we're in a competition?
That is correct.
Okay. Secondly, the last kind of conversations that I've heard throughout was that we will go back to the bottom of the list because of what happened. Is that still staying? So, really, in reality, we start fresh because we're applying, we are applying. It's like an RFP kind of process, my...
So, the MSBA has no list. There's no bottom. You go back into...it's not...so, like with library financing, when you finance through libraries, you finance and there's a list. You know that you're moving up the list and when you hit the top eight or so, you know you can start planning that you're getting there. With MSBA, it's basically a big bowl that everyone...to look at it, like everyone's equal. And then they look at them. But absolutely, I mean, this...there could be an expedited process because of what we went through, but it could be that we submit in April. And I don't know if they typically, traditionally, all submissions that occur from January to April for the April deadline are taken up at their December meeting. I don't know if they would be willing...if they would entertain even taking this up beforehand, but they typically take them up at the December meeting, just like they did this past December for all of the new people entering the pool. We could be invited into the next step. We could be told, apply again next January. I mean, it's all...just like this process, I mean, we submitted for this whole project multiple times before it was pulled for consideration many years ago. So, it's...it all depends on their will and what they're willing, what the finances of the city, what the balance of everything is. I mean, they have additional money they can budget for now with MSBA for amount of projects, but it's...we are the same as everyone else. Equal to, I was saying that there is no building committee anymore. This is simply a statement of interest to move forward. I mean, the building committee, when it was with...when the project was withdrawn in December, everything with that project was gone, aside from a couple of housekeeping things that the committee had to take care of. I mean, it was over. So, this is day one.
Starting, okay.
Yeah, I think the best thing is just to get the application and that's the first priority. There's going to be a lot of meetings on the financing, okay? The auditor's going to be in here, you know, the bond rating agency is going to be in here. This happened before too, right? I remember the bond...the bond person was in here, had a list of the current bonding that's been going on in the city for the last 30 years and where it stacks up, what's going on in the future with bonding. It's a never-ending process. So, I think the financing is going to be something that's going to come later. There's going to be a lot of discussion on that through various, various levels of government. So, I think just getting the application and that's the most important thing. One, in a timely manner, okay, April 8th is coming up. That'll be here quick. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, but I...my concern is if the city council is going to be asked to, and I think we're going to be asked to pick a recommendation, if I remember the meeting right?
We...
The letter or...
Yes, the letter expresses that the desired location from the school...from the school department. And there was a lot of discussion. We just had a school committee retreat this weekend and we went through and discussed. And the group as a body believed that...I'm not going to say that everyone did, but the group, the majority of the group decided that PEC was the location that we should be submitting, okay?
We did not make any decisions as a body. We discussed the project, but that it was said that at our March meeting, we were going to have a more in-depth discussion, similar... the similar timeline the city council's taking with that. So, there was no discussion on it, but just that...
A vote.
Right. There was favorabilities of each site, pros and cons of each site, but there was no action taken by the school committee that there was a favorable site.
But if I can just continue with the question there. So, and I do think this is something we have...if the city council is going to be asked to go along with a recommendation, I guarantee one of the questions is going to be, what's the financial cost? What is our capacity? So, all these questions that I'm asking financially that the MSBA has obviously asked, need to be answered before that. But I know we're not getting approval before that, but those are questions that are going to be asked. What's the cost going to be? What's the yearly payment going to be if we do this? What's the yearly payment going to be if we do that? What's our bond capacity? If we do that, what's our additional bond capacity?
Yes, I think if I'm not mistaken at the retreat, this...that sounds like a lot of red tape that would have to...a lot of unanswerable questions to get to the goal of submitting, hey, will you look at us again, okay? So, I think we can boil down to submit a request for approval of a site, one site. I don't think they...that we were thinking necessarily...we definitely...people were throwing around the different options because we were given some options, but I think that...tell me if I'm wrong, but to avoid what you're talking about because it doesn't even...ultimately, it doesn't matter. If you...if during the process, we're going to find what our ceiling is after the application is submitted, then we can get into, you know, determining the pros and cons of a particular site. Am I right about that, Devin? I thought that's what we...
Yeah, I mean, I would say so, that it's more that the committee was going to take greater action in March in reviewing them. I mean, I will say that if we...let's say we picked site A, whatever site A may be, and we moved through this process and everything turned out perfect, we could bond for this, the finances were there, everything was great, but we discovered in two years, because that's what we're talking...we're not talking about tomorrow. We're talking this is like two or three years from a...even a groundbreaking type of situation. I mean, if something happened and another site became the more preferable site, I mean, there are things that you can do to switch that, just like we did with this. I mean, this project started...this...the former project started as the McMahon School project. I mean, this was a project for McMahon School because we had submitted for many years for Lawrence and were denied. We got permission to submit for Lawrence. They said, submit another statement of interest, which the council approved, and they basically moved the project over. Then they said you can add in another site. So, I mean, there's...as much as they say there's not flexibility with some of that stuff, if something happened, I believe, because they...the MSBA has been very helpful to Holyoke with things, they would take that into consideration. But it's really...is the memo that you got, but we're not talking about until after Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, states, I mean, there's pros and cons to both sites with that. I mean, we are...it's...this is an unusual process that we're going through with their statement of interest process because in most communities and in most cases, we wouldn't have some of the detailed construction costs that we may have now because we just went through this. So, I mean, that's unique with some of that knowledge that we have about what things would cost because it just wouldn't be there. We have great detail around that with it. So, I mean, there's that aspect of it, but really more is just being able to say we'd like to move forward. And if it's not the will of the council, I mean, we...there is...I mean, there's already transition planning going on for the district to make the district a K to five, six, eight, nine through 12 district. I mean, that's been clear. If it's not the will of the council to submit something, I mean, we will make do with what we have at that point and then look towards next January. I mean, this is not something we're trying to jam down anyone's throat in this short window. But it was also, I mean, the MSBA said, wait. And we just got the go-ahead to actually entertain this a week ago, week and a half ago, maybe. So, it was...I mean, this is the timeline that we've been dealt with by them with that tight window. Same thing with the accelerated repair projects. I mean, we're told when the period opens up and that's about it.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. So, I keep hearing you, Counselor Murphy, that you keep going back to submitting the bonding capacities from the city. So, I just need a clarification. I'm sorry, Devin, that you're leaving. So, really quick, when I heard you read the letter, which was back in December 17th, they gave the city, or they gave us, three to four weeks. Um, when I heard you read the letter, which was back in December seventeenth, they gave the city, or they gave us three to four weeks to provide them with that information and to set up a meeting to discuss it. We are way beyond that, right? And now they just come back recently and say, "Go ahead and submit a statement of interest." So maybe we need a clarification. Do they still want to know where we are for our bonding capacity? Or do they not need it now? Because now they're just saying, "Go ahead and submit, and we'll determine whether or not we're going to invite you." So if somebody can clarify that for us, because why go through so much if at the end of the day, they, they don't even want it right now?
So from my understanding, was that the mayor's office spoke with the MSBA, spoke with local services, and that was the change where we were told we could put in a, a statement of interest. Is that what you ascertained from that? That there were conversations that occurred and MSBA said, "You may now enter, you may now file for this." It wasn't, "We didn't get this, so you might as well do this." It was, "Don't do anything. Get us this information and then we'll tell you." Well, I think that there are some aspects of it that has satisfied the MSBA to tell us, file the statement of interest. That's my understanding of what it was. So I think that some of those have been met. I think there's still concerns, I mean, because whenever this project is actually bonded for, I mean, there's going to be different things in the debt service. There's going to be different things going on. There's new things bonded for, but as of right now, they have said you can submit a statement of interest for a project.
Again, I, I'm, I think we, we're, we, what we're trying to do here is all the same thing. We're trying to get whatever we need to get to MSBA to get them the information that they wanted, and that's, that's the only thing I ask. But I do think, uh, and it would be pretty sad if in two months we have not been able to collect what our fiscal capacity is and kind of, this is what we got coming up. This is what's being, uh, paid off, uh, so that there, there is a fully understanding, because it does make, and I know we're not going to know that it's going to be sixty million dollars or seventy million dollars, depending on which one. We don't, and it may be seventy-five million, but we need to know that we could afford thirty million dollars worth of bonding or forty million dollars worth of bonding. And right now, we don't know that. Uh, and so from a city council, because that's what we have to vote on. We have to vote on bonds. Uh, and I, I do think it behooves the city, the mayor's office, uh, and all the financial players in the city to be able to give us, including Kinder, give us a report as to, this is what your bonding capacity, you have another fifty million dollars of bonding capacity, and you're going to retire ten million over the next couple of years. Uh, but right now, we don't have that.
So I, no, that's fine. I'm just a little confused. So you're saying that without realizing the financial aspects of the city and what we can bond for, there would not be a recommendation to put a, a statement of interest, um, in regards to like the school, like, right? Like, we're just asking for a, a letter of interest. We're not asking about like our bonding. We're not asking about financials. We're just saying like, "Hey, put us back on the pipeline. Put us back on, on the MSBA's, um, radar so that we can say then, let's start back over and talking about the bonding, talking about the, the, the financials, talking about what school we want to." I mean, again, we might have had discussed PEC, but maybe we think of something else and something, you know, uh, um, Plan A, B, or C. So I think this is where we're just trying to say like, "Hey, we just want to be, if the city is still interested in getting a new school for our city," which again, I, I fully support in, in that, our, our kids deserve it. Um, it's just saying, "Give us an opportunity to put us back on the MSBA's, um, radar."
If I can answer?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
She's, I can acknowledge what she's, she said.
So then if I understood correctly when Devin spoke, at this point, the MSBA did receive the information that they needed from the mayor's office and from whoever else was involved. Now, in that case, if the city council didn't hear about it or was not made aware, then would that not have been that the city council asked the mayor's office to provide that information in order for you guys to hear what was provided to the MSBA? So at this point, whatever they needed, they received. So it's not a, a means of, have they received it? They might still need to receive it. It's more of, city council needs to be made, be aware, needs to be made aware of what information was provided to the MSBA. So I mean, I think that's where we're at at this point. If I, if I'm mistaken, please let me know.
Can I, can I just say something here? Just because, um, it looks like from the time that probably Murphy, you filed your order, there has been meetings that have addressed some of the questions that we may be looking for, correct? Am I saying this or not? Because it seems like you just said, you, um, um, Devin, that you guys met this last Friday? Was it last Friday? When, when was it? Somebody said you met a Friday ago with the...
After the, uh...
With, um...
So we met on the day of the swearing-in.
Oh, okay.
And then we also met, was it Thursday?
That's Thursday.
Yeah, it was late last week, Thursday or Friday.
Okay, okay. So am I, am I, do you follow what I'm trying to explain? Is that, do you think that some of that information, you filed your order maybe a month ago, correct? And then Murphy?
February sixth.
Sixth, okay.
So I, I will say that there was definitely, um, some slowness with getting the information and getting it out there, and that's why Councilor Murphy filed it. Uh, but if, if I was in your shoes on the council, I would review the statement of interest as it is, but I would also, as a separate item, ask for that, that submission to see what was put in there. I mean, it, it would definitely be prudent to ask for that, to see where things fall at that snapshot in time. I mean, a- another reason why we're looking towards doing this in a more, um, so close to the last project. I mean, there may be some ability to use some of the information that we gathered in the last project. And as we get farther away from that, that ability to use some of that just goes away. I mean, it would, it'd be great if we could save some money from where the investments were already made, uh, with that. We don't know. The MSBA would not commit to us that we could actually use, uh, everything that we did, but that, that's a hope.
I'm not saying that, that we wouldn't do that. I'm just saying, the more information you have, you long-term feel like, "I'm comfortable with that choice." If we, let's say we go with one that's seventy-five million, then we find out in the end, uh, our bonding capacity is twenty million, then we needed to come up with thirty-five million, uh, and then what do we do? And we're back to, you know, all right, we're reinventing the wheel. I, I, I think it would be, the more information we have, and I agree with what Devin just said, if we can get the mayor and the financial team to give us what the financial reports are in terms of bonding capacity, because bonding capacity is really the issue. Bonding capacity and how we're going to absorb it in the budget is, is the issue. So if we can get that included with the memo that we're going to have on our agenda on the eighteenth, you can kind of walk your way through. Yes, clearly, right now, our financial capacity says we could do this. And then, then when you're voting for something, you're voting with pretty, at that point, the financial information you need to make a good judgment. If you do it the other way, you're voting, "This is what we would like to do," and then you find out somewhere down the line that our financial capacity doesn't allow us to do that. And I'm just saying, we want to get, I would like to get to the point where I have as much information available to me so that I can make whatever recommendation and, and, and note, do it with the confidence that we can afford it.
Can, uh, can I, so right now, let me ask, um, in regards to your order, was more to try to see if we had the financial stability or support behind it. What I'm also hearing is that at this moment, it's an urgency for us that on Tuesday, there is a, a, an order requesting the, um, the, uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, letter of, 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 um, interest that must be approved so that they can move forward at least. Because at this point, the, the, once the RFPs begins to be written up again, it's when then all these items are going to be requested. So I'm wondering if at the same time, is there any other, um, wording that we should ask for all that information to in addition that we are, you know, allow or, um, voting in, in, in favor of this particular item with the conditions that we get all these items beforehand? Or is that not the appropriate way to do it? I'm trying to get...
Yeah, so, so what we have to do is send the, the letter of interest, the SOI, right, um, to the city council, and that would be done by tomorrow noon time to the city clerk's office, right? After that, then you guys would take it up on your agenda and discuss saying the letter of interest. Now, again, the financials and everything else might not be tied to it, but I'm just going to go back to saying like, it is only a letter of interest. It is saying, "Put the, us back at the MSBA." And I get what you're saying, Terry, I really do about, you know, making sure that we do it. Because I, I would be curious to find out if we, if the letter of interest does not go through, right? And the city council does not agree to this, does not put it to the vote, what is our waiting line for that afterwards? Um, to be of interest again? Do you, Devin, do you?
It opens up pretty much every January to April.
So then that means we're going to have to wait a whole nother year. And again, we already did a lot of the legwork. I mean, I sat on the school board, um, on the new school projects, um, for the last, um, for the last time that, and you know, we did a lot of work and we have a lot of the numbers and we have a lot of the, the, the items and information that we can utilize within this year. Because again, next year, we are going to talk about, um, structure costs are going to changes, um, other things are going to change. And so it's just like, you know, it might not be that the PEC is going to be the most quality things. I think that if we have an idea now, would be supportive and just saying like, "We just need that letter of interest." And then you guys will file your own agendas with the city, uh, with the city auditor, the tax collectors and stuff like that. I think that is where, uh, we're still coming at. Because again, waiting another year to think about and then have these discussions and then come back again and saying, "Well, hold on. We, we now need to do the bondings and find out again." I mean, we're at the point where it is short time, but it's just something that, I mean, we all deal with that, right? Last minute emergencies.
I think there's just a placeholder. I think that's how we got to look at it. I, I really, and I want to know what our bonding rate is, our ability is too, but I think this is just an urgent, let's get this placeholder in. And if everybody wants to say, "But let's not be fooled again about what we can and can't do," that's totally understood. Because I don't want to go through what we went through either, but I think this is absolutely just placeholder. All right, now we'll come back. And given that we can't even vote on this at all, I think we should probably, you know, I think, I think we all understand each other where we're coming from, but I think we got to get this, this to the city council by noon tomorrow. We, we can't even vote on this first item on the agenda, right?
The first item on the agenda is not specific to the SOI. So, uh, that was just, again, the, the, the goal was to make sure that all the financial information was being shared. And that, what, what I had been told was that it had not been. And that the process was moving very slowly and could I do something to try to speed up the process? That's why I filed the order.
I got you.
And I'm not opposed to the SOI, but I do think, uh, that the more information you have upfront from a financial perspective about the city's capacity, the more likely that what we recommend is what we can do. And that if we, if we don't do that, uh, long-term, when it comes to, because the city council needs nine votes to bond, uh, that it becomes more difficult. I think the, the upfront, if it is as much financial information as possible, and I know it's not going to be fully vetted, but we should be able to get the information, uh, from the mayor's office and the treasurer and the tax, and, and, and order in terms of, and, and our financial advisors, what our, what our bond capacity is and what we can expect it to be, and what the cost to the city might be if we were to do this based on the cost of the previous recommendation or whatever. I, I, I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just thinking when we put something there, and I'm, maybe I'm being more of a devil's advocate, that city council's going to want to say, "Okay, if we do this, what's the cost going to be?" Not in terms of total dollars, but what's it going to be year to year and what's our impact in, in, in terms of capacity? And I think that's a valid question.
So I, I expressed this, this weekend as well. I think the most important thing, um, if we do want to move forward with this, the absolute, absolute most important thing is that everybody on the council be aware that this isn't something that ties us into funding, that this is just a placeholder, like Niles said. Um, if we get into the discussion at city council on whether or not we can afford it and all that, um, or if there's any thought that, you know, that this means it, it locks the city into any type of commitment, then you're right. There's probably not going to be support, but I really believe that we should, you know, um, that, that everyone needs to be aware. You know, I, I, I'm pretty sure everybody in this room is aware, but when it does get submitted or presented to the city council that there's a, a common understanding that this isn't, this is just a placeholder. It's not locking us into anything. And I hope that that will help, you know, overcome any hesitation from any of the city councilors, because any answers that they do want, they can get before funding is committed and before, um, the MSBA even invites us into the program.
And I'm going to second what he says, and maybe we need to look at it in a different, in a different thought process. When we're talking of a statement of interest, it's more of somebody looking to find a job and applying for different jobs. You're not tied to anything. All you did was apply. You have to wait till you get accepted and say, "You're hired." And then it's up to me whether, do I want that pay scale or do I want this pay scale? And then I choose. The same thing goes with this statement of interest. All it is, is just saying, "You know, we're interested in building a school." Now, who's receiving it is going to say, "I'm interested that you do, but this is what it's going to cost you." You have now that time from when you submitted to when you find out, it's what, a good eight months before you find out, to get all the information that the city councils will need and the city needs to know whether you are at a capacity to bond or not, and if you are, to what extent. But to, to base that on whether or not to take a leap of faith in applying, it shouldn't be tied together. It's, it's going to take you some time probably just to get that all compiled as to what was, what was told to the MSBA. But if we can get that letter in tomorrow, which I know it's not something that's on the agenda, but apparently we're talking about it so much. So if we can get that onto the agenda for the eighteenth, then base your decision on, it's just an application. So yeah, I mean, we all want new schools. Go ahead. We'll see if we get picked. If we do, from that time that you met on the eighteenth is your moment to say, "I want those financial, those financials brought in front of the city council so that if you do get accepted by the MSBA in December and they turn around and say, 'Hey, we are interested in you guys,' you guys kind of already have a, a mind of what exactly to expect." I mean, we've gone through it already, but, um, and what you can afford. So I'm hoping that maybe when we're, when you guys are there on Tuesday, um, it's really just having that thought of, it's a job application and we're just seeing if by any chance we're going to even be interviewed or not.
Okay. I, um, can I just say, I, I, I'm going to have to move from this particular, in, um, subject that was not part of this agenda, because I was not aware of any letter of interest being requested, because it's not been ordered, but I will recommend that. So we're going to go back to the city order that, um, was filed, which was a, a response to discuss the, 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 um, MSBA process, if it went along, you know, if it had moved along or not.
Since it's been complied with and that, and that we request the financial information as quickly as possible.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, so this has been complied with, um, and I think this is the only item that we can...
No, that's, that other item.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't...
Keep your glasses on.
Thank you.
Keep your glasses on.
Order that the school department at the Department of Public Works seeks to partner with the Mass DOT Safe Routes to School Programs to seek funding to improve the safety for students walking and biking to school. One priority should be the construction of a sidewalk for the Dean Campus, beginning at the parking lot, exit of Main Street and continuing southerly to the corner of, um, St. Vincent Street, and then continuing up St. Vincent Street on the north, northerly side to the parking lot exit on that street. All other routes in the city should also be reviewed for needed improvements. All other routes in the city should also be reviewed for needed improvements.
So if I can, again, I, I, I've been trying to get a sidewalk at Dean since I got back. And, uh, the city council passed the order and then I was told there was no money. But then I've had a couple of constituents tell me about the Safe Route for Schools program. And they told me we should get, and we should not only apply, I mean, obviously I wanna see an application for Dean. I mean, I'm waiting. I, I hate to say it. People come down St. Vincent Street and if they're taking the left, they're well past the center of the line, which I'm also trying to get lines on the road, which I would like to get done. And then the people trying to take a right have to go farther over where there's no walkway and the kids are trying to walk on the grass. I mean, it's an accident waiting to happen. Uh, and now we've got, and as I understand it, the Safe Route for School, as long as you've got students that are in eighth grade or below, you can get funding for it. And now we've got six, seven and eight uh, at, at Dean. So it now would qualify, whereas in the past, from what I understand, because it was a high school, it wouldn't qualify. So that is one dangerous walk. And now, and I am seeing younger kids trying to go up from Main Street up St. Vincent Street. And I mean, we, yeah, we need to, we, that's one area that I would hope that we apply and it's, and I, I've heard different rumors. I don't know the procedure. I just know that I believe the school committee would review all of the routes and you would be able to put an application in, I think with the DPW, as I understand it, uh, to potentially get funding, um, for walkways or to make it safer. And I, I kinda drove around some schools just to, and obviously Lawrence School has other issues, but even there I would, potentially there's some areas that could be made safer. And one of the things, uh, we just did, uh, with the Sal Hoya project, we're doing raised sidewalks to try to slow traffic down. And I'm wondering even if that potentially could make it safer for kids to walk to school. So, uh, bless you. So the, the goal here is to find some funding. I'm still trying to get the city to pay for it, but if not, then let's, if we can get some money for the Mass DOT and, you know, I would encourage the school committee to work with the principals. If there are specific safety issues and how their kids get to school, uh, let's see if we can get them addressed with this as well and then make an application to the, the state. And hopefully, hopefully get funding and hopefully by the next school year have safer routes wherever they're needed.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, maybe Anthony could answer this one for me? Would there have to be a percentage of students who walk? Because I'm sure we do bus many of our sixth to eighth graders. So would that impact on whether or not we would get, um, be able to apply for a grant for, for safer route?
It, it would. Um, at Dean, only 10% of our students walk. And none of them should be walking up St. Vincent. The only ones that do walk, walk on, uh, they go out of Dean and take a left to go to the Springdale area. Um, that area that you're referring to is considered a hazard zone. So if a student happens to live, um, in an area where that's the direction they would have to walk, they're, they qualify for busing. So, um, out of the 277 students that we have at Dean, only 10%, only 28 of them don't, don't receive transportation and you know, um, they have, they, I'm sure they live in the, uh, the Springdale area where there is sidewalks. We wouldn't want kids walking up there. So if they are, um, chances are they're likely going to visit some friends over in Tokoniki. Um, they're not going home. Um, but because otherwise they would be getting bused if, if they lived in that direction.
What is the percent?
10% for Dean.
But what is the percent in order to be qualified?
I don't know what the percent is. I actually spoke to, we do actually partner with Safe Routes to School. Um, we're currently working on a project with, um, Morgan School. Uh, we have one, two, three, four schools that are above 70% walkers. And those are the schools that, you know, they, they tend to partner with, with districts on to make sure, you know, they, they make sure that the sidewalks are handicap accessible. They make sure that there's crosswalks. They, they do an assessment. So right now they've done that, they're in the process of doing that assessment with Morgan School. I mean, they look at, you know, they got heat maps like this that show you where, you know, where there's been, uh, traffic accidents so that they can, you know, collectively come up with a walk route that avoids those, those areas that have had, historically had, um, um, car accidents. They look at crime data, things like that and come up with the best, you know, work with the school. I will say that, um, it does take a huge partnership on the school leadership, you know, um, the, these things like this only happen if the building principal uh, participates in it and works with them. Uh, they do have infrastructure grants that are available to, up to a million dollars. Um, if you qualify, but they do require that you work with DPW. It's, it's gotta be a joint effort. We haven't done any of those, um, but I'd be happy to. I think that, but personally, I think that we'd, we'd likely, uh, we're, we're more likely to get a fu- uh, a grant like that, an infrastructure grant or what they call, um, signs and lines grants, which could be up to $6,000 per application. So the, the infrastructure grants are a mil- up to a million dollars per application, but they would want.
Yeah, would be sidewalks and things like that?
Yeah, sidewalks. So, and then lines and signs are like painting and, uh, signage and stuff like that. Those are up to 6,000 per application. But you're more likely to get invite, you know, to, to get an application approved if you have a high volume of walkers. Um, so the schools that I know we have a high volume of walkers are Lawrence, um, Kelly and Sullivan and Morgan.
Morgan. So, eh, we have not applied yet for, for any of those or?
We have not, no. Um, it takes a partnership with the, you know, usually DPW and the school committee.
And do you know what, is there a match? Do you know?
I'm, I'm not, I don't think that there's a match, but I'm not 100% sure. So don't quote me on that.
I won't.
Since I haven't, um, we haven't gone through any application process. It's never reached that. I'd love to partner. I think anything we could do to make our, our, our routes, our walk routes safer for kids is a good thing. And if there's money, free money on the table, we should.
Absolutely.
Absolutely jump on it. Um, and I don't know who I need to work with, but they, you know, it's not something that the school committee or the school department can do on their own. It, it has to be, you know, with the Department of Public Works or DPW and the school, and the school department.
The reason, do you think DPW, because of the match need, there's gotta be a match to it, do you think?
I have no idea.
Okay, okay. Cause you don't, okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. I just wanna know, Anthony, um, what of the 10% of walkers are middle schoolers? Do you know?
Uh, that doesn't include STEM. STEM has 33% that are non-riders, but a, a good portion of those are out of zone students. We don't know whether or not they're walking or riding. Chances are they're getting picked up by their parents. So if you're outside of the Ian White or STEM zone and you still wanna go to STEM, you know, you're allowed to, but you live pretty far away. So the chances are is they're, they're getting rides, um, from their parents.
Um, and then would it be our, us to recommend that this maybe go to city council, um, and have DPW come and have a conversation about how they can partner with the school department in regards to, um, the DOT Safe Routes and seeing like if there's um, an opportunity to collaborate and fill an application? I mean, again, that street is awful. Um, again, four schools is, four schools and having a high, high walkers and traffic volumes is a big thing. Oh, thanks. This is my first time. That's so exciting. Uh, so make a motion for, um, this agenda item to be brought in forth, right, in front of city council? Um, to have DPW, um, discuss, um, a collaboration with DOT?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hold on. Go ahead, go ahead.
So, I mean, I'm, I, I'm, I'm glad this is kinda maybe getting this off the foot, off the ground, off the footing and getting people ready to move on those schools. I can tell you, um, I'm, I'm gonna try to figure out and get some money for the Dean School, cause I'm, they may be visiting somebody, but I can tell you, there's, there, if they're high schoolers, I've really gotten, my eyes have, they've gotten smaller and smaller. Uh, and I don't think that's the case, but.
Yeah, I feel the same way when I see them. Like, oh, is that smaller than high school?
But we definitely need to make sure that we try to get that one done and I'll try to do that with city money or CD, CDBG money or something along that lines. But, you know, the other schools, whatever we can do. And I would also encourage us in the motion to include the city, city engineer. So we're gonna refer to the DPW plus the city engineer and, and a, and a copy to, uh, the school department.
It may just make a thought.
Amended?
Yes. Amended.
Okay, so, just because now I'm curious, do you think some of the charter school, you, of students could be walking anywhere from there or no?
No, because.
How would, how?
So the charter has moved to Chicopee. I mean, so, right, oh no, the Holy Kai. They, most of, um, the Holy Charter, most of those kids are coming on the other side of coming off of the, um, Northampton Street, Kama Plaza area. Um, I don't, I mean, I know because I have, um, some nieces and nephew who go to the charter and I see the traffic when I drop them off. You don't see as much as you would see on the STEM or, um, the high schoolers, you, like I said, going to work or going to friend's house or going in that area. So.
Yeah, that's what it usually, I mean, I've seen it myself. I've been there evaluating like dismissal cause we had buses that were really packed, particularly at STEM. And I've witnessed the principal, hey, where are you guys going? Oh, I'm going to my friend's house. And they're, you know, they're walking that way towards Tokoniki instead of getting on the bus to go home. Um, so, but we, like, if, if you live in Tokoniki, which is likely the path you would take is to go out of the parking lot and go up St. Vincent, you qualify for busing. So we have a bus that goes that way. And you shouldn't be walking because we don't want you to walk that way. So if you are, you're either out of zone and live up there or you're, you know, you stayed, yeah, you stayed in school late and you want, you know, your parents didn't pick you up, so you ended up walking that way. Um, but it's not like, it's not to get home. You're forced to walk that way because the school department doesn't provide busing. We provide busing to any kid that lives up in that area and is attending one of those schools because it's not safe. It's a, you know, it's a dangerous, there's no sidewalks. Um, you gotta cut over to get to that. It's, it's not, it's not a safe walk zone. It's not a walk zone, period. Like it's, kids shouldn't be walking there.
No one should, right?
Yeah, no one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What about Dunahue? Are those, what's the percentage of students getting busted Dunahue?
Dunahue, the percentage of students is 50/50.
So that would be eligible if there was a need?
What would be eligible?
Eligible for a potential safe route to school? I mean, I'm assuming most, I'm assuming most of them are coming from Tokoniki or foreign drive.
I don't, I mean, most, they don't even go to the street. So there is a safe route.
Okay.
But like, if that's an area we wanna look at, we could call Mass Dot. I mean, I, I know the guy Omar, he, he's just, you know, I, I think it's more job security for them, cause they're like, oh my God, there's all this free money. We have jobs and there's schools that aren't utilizing our service. So they want, they want school districts to, to call them and they come out for free. They, you know, they spend about an hour and a half, two hours, usually around, um, arrival to kinda, you know, they, they set up a team of people all around and they just watch and they take notes. They look at the sidewalks. They look at the lights. They look at the crossing guards, whether or not there are crossing guards. They count how many students are walking. Um, and then another part of it is educational so that, you know, they wanna come in to like a PE session every year and they wanna educate kids on, you know, the proper way to walk across the street. You know, they wanna encourage kids to ride their bikes and wear helmets and, you know, there's a whole educational component around it where if you have a really strong partnership with them, um, those are all services that they add that are free to, to districts. But again, it, it takes a, a willing partner, a willing principal. We had a walk, a good walking school bus going at Kelly or at Sullivan when Mr. Bryce was here and, um, when Mr. Bryce left, the walking school bus, you know, kinda went away, that, that whole partnership. There was one at Kelly, you know, and we've had a lot of turnover at Kelly and now that's, there's no longer. So, you know, they're knocking on our door like, hey, what's going on? How can we get more of your schools involved? So we're, we're definitely involved. Now on the infrastructure grants, that's different. That's when you need the, the city partnership. You know, we do, uh, la- last year we held, um, two national walk to school days. So we prepared flyers. It's more to, it's more to promote, uh, walk safety and promote exercise. So kids walk to school. So we, we posted flyers. We did this twice a year at a couple of our schools. Just encouraging kids to walk to school. There would be people that we, a place where you could meet up and then, um, walk to school. We, you know, those are things they love. They love to see that, you know, and they help us with the promotion and the educational aspect of it. Uh, but on the infrastructure side and the funding side, that's where, you know, we would need to partner with, with DPW or Public Works.
Thank you. On the motion?
Hold on, I'm sorry.
So really quick, one of the things that I also noticed, um, when I lived in Miami, one of the biggest things was that flashing 20. That was one of the things that was enforced every morning and every evening is the 20 mile per hour zone in the schools. And that as a, as a traveling nurse, I noticed that it's nothing enforced, nor here, nor any of the cities, um, but I think maybe that's something that we, we also need to look into, cause why have a flashing 20, right, sign that you probably paid a lot for? If it's not even something that's gonna be enforced and it's also for the safety of our students.
So, um, and the, um, so we have a, an amendment to the order or no? To, to his?
Her motion.
To your motion.
To add the engineer.
Include engineer.
To include the engineer from DPW.
Superintendent DPW.
Superintendent of DPW to, to partner on this.
Partner with the schools?
This school.
To meet with the school, with, could they meet with you, Anthony?
Absolutely.
And to meet with the schools.
Anthony and, and, uh, just to look at the, the needs that we have and let's put an application together. And, you know, let's make it as safe as we can, whether it be a walkway, a bikeway, whatever. And obviously the other aspect, trying, just trying to make it safe to get to school, period. Uh, or all those kinda things. But yeah, I think, and if there's money out there and we're not after it, shame on, shame on us.
So.
Second.
I second.
Okay, so, everyone, you know.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Anything else we were said? So we'll make a motion and we will be adjourning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.